Good evening, I want to welcome you and call to order this meeting of the Florisville ISD Board of Trustees for this date, June the 3rd, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Let the record show that there is a form of board members present, myself, Joel Odom, Ms. Liana Martinez, Mr. Jason Savoda, Ms. Bana Reed, Mr. Stephen Shawrock, and Mr. Craig Boots. Furthermore, let the record show that this meeting has been duly posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Ms. Reed will now lead us in prayer, followed by Mr. Boots leading us in the pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for having everyone here. Please be with those that aren't here, with illnesses, vacation, be with them. Please be with the people that are involved in all the bad weather that we're having. Protect our people, those people. Dear Heavenly Father, be with the wars that are involved. And I want to thank you all for our school district, that we have a fantastic school district. Thank you for all the teachers, the staffs, this board, and the parents who make us a great school district, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Mr. Shawrock will now recite our FISD vision and mission statement.
The FISD vision statement is character, knowledge, and confidence. Our mission statement is, FISD is committed to the development of innovative lifelong learners who possess character traits to achieve personal and professional success.
Now, Ms. Martinez will now recite our FISD goals.
The FISD goals are excellent student outcomes, superior workplace environment, exceptional customer service and community engagement, strategic resource management.
We will now recite our FISD core beliefs. In FISD, we believe all students feel safe and supported in the developmentally and academically challenging environment.
Families are welcome partners in their children's education.
Faculty and staff are compassionate, dedicated, applicable individuals who are student-centered.
Campus leadership is fair, equitable, and clearly communicative and engages with stakeholders.
Superintendent and central administration lead with integrity, transparency, and clear communication to provide a well-resourced educational environment.
Trustees provide a student-centered and fiscally responsible leadership and transparent and ethical support of all stakeholders.
Now, Mr. Savoda will now recite our overview of good governance and code of ethics.
Each month, we highlight one of our good governance indicators in code of ethics that the FISD Board of Trustees follow to promote the best interests of the district as a whole. This month, for the code of ethics, we are highlighting student-centered focus. I will continuously guided, I will be continuously guided by what is best for all students of the district. Our good governance indicator for this month is, written board operating procedures are in place and are reviewed and adopted on an annual basis.
We will now have some recognitions for the Masonic Lodge Florisville Teachers of the Year. Dr. Gilstrap?
Yes, I'd like to call up a Masonic Lodge representative here this evening to recognize a couple of Teachers of the Year. These are their recognized Teachers of the Years, they're not the district's, but we want to give them a few moments to recognize some outstanding educators.
Thank you, Dr. Gilstrap and the school administration for allowing us to recognize of two of your many excellent teachers. The secondary Teacher of the Year is Marybel Rios, and elementary school is Denise Gibson. Mirabor Lamar Award is awarded from the second, by the, is a name for the second President of the Republic of Texas, who has been called the father of Texas public school system for his leadership in establishing quality public education in Texas. Lamar was a member of the Masonic fraternity, known then as it is today for his strong support of excellent and public schools. With this award, we recognize your exemplary achievement and offer our warmest congratulations to you and your school. Denise?
Thank you.
Oh, I got, I got some more videos. This is good stuff.
Thank you.
I could tell a little story about me and you, but I'd cry. Me and this lady go back long ways with, with my daughter.
Well, just quickly, I know we got a board member going to say something. I want to say it's from Masonic Lodge, thank you very much for your support of public education and not only our Teachers of the Year, these that you recognize, but also our seventh graders. I believe y'all presented at the awards assembly for essay contest.
Yeah.
So, for your support of public education, thank you very much.
And then we do teeth kits for the first graders.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Mr. Brew, thank you for all of you and your Masonic Lodge. You got a lot of good gentlemen in there, I appreciate everything y'all do for it.
We thank you.
And to Ms. Gibson and Ms. Rios, I don't think there's enough thanks, y'all want to get enough thanks. Y'all, thank y'all from us, but you know, y'all do such a great job with our kiddos and to be recognized as just a small portion of what y'all do for us and our kids, I can't thank y'all enough, so thank y'all, congratulations.
You better cry.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. There you go. Ready, one, two, one more, one, two.
Anybody else need one?
It all costs the same.
Yeah? Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Now, our baseball, softball, academic all-state recognitions presented by Coach Martinez.
Thank you, Dr. Odom, Dr. Gilstrap, and board. Really excited to call up our softball and our baseball coach, Coach LaFleur. Coach Garcia, you guys, I'm going to introduce them all in order.
Come on, ladies and gentlemen.
Young standing this side, hide behind me.
No hiding in there.
That's right.
First, I would just like to congratulate our baseball and softball program on a phenomenal season they've had, really proud of them and how they represented our program, our community, our district, first class, and everything they did. Really proud of our coaching staff and the way they led our programs throughout the rest of spring. You know, for our, for our softball and baseball players, they had a little bit of disadvantage. I say disadvantage when it comes to this kind of stuff because their season went as long as they possibly could, I mean, it went as long into the school year as it could. So, a lot of them are not here today. Our baseball, we have one baseball kid, Grady Manuel, he made all-state, he is out of town today, so he couldn't be here, but Coach LaFleur is coming to represent our baseball program. And then Coach Perez and Coach Garcia, I'll let, I'll turn it over to them to recognize our softball team.
All right. I guess our young ladies right here, we're missing Lauren and, Lauren Schultz and Carolina Guzman. We got Bella Ramon here, Chloe Salinas, Brenna Bags, Jolynn Perez, and Aiden Barretta. And I'm very proud of these young ladies, not only for the season that they had, but also, I think it's what education's supposed to be about, and they made academic all-state, and we're super proud of them. I think that just goes back to the support that they have here from their parents, all the way from their teachers, and the administration, and the athletic department, and all the things that they help push them through, and, and that's what we want out of them. I think they're going to be just great people in this community, hopefully forever they come back and, and keep this community going and doing the right things, but super proud of them, and I think this is what it's supposed to be about. And not only did we go, I think, the furthest we've ever been in softball here, but I think this also shows this is half our team that also made academic all-state for seniors, so amazing job, super proud of them. I couldn't ask for anything more out of a group of young ladies right here, very proud of them.
All right, ladies, I tell you, we're so proud of you, and your talent on the field showed itself this year. And, but not just the talent, but again, academically, not only were you talented in sports and in softball, but you were talented in the classroom, and that's what we're very proud of, right? That's the most important thing. Actually, softball's most important. No, actually, no, actually, it is. It's very important, and we are so happy as a board to have you representing Florisville High School. Go Jaguars, right? You guys are great, bro.
Come on, Coach. You too, come on, Coach.
One, two, one, two.
Come on up.
All right, thank you very much, thank you, everyone. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. And congratulations. Congratulations. So. Congratulations. 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 Good job. Thank you. Good job. Good job. We'll make sure that's in that.
Our last recognition is for our mighty Tiger Band, presented by Mr. Beaver.
Come line up right up there, there you go.
Yeah. There you go.
Good evening. If we haven't had the chance to meet face-to-face, my name is Aaron Beaver. I am one of the assistant band directors here at the high school. And this past Memorial Day weekend, these three fellows, as well as two others who are not able to be with us tonight, competed at the state level for the solo and ensemble contest. And to kind of explain that goes back all the way to January, where they have the regional contest in which they have to perform a solo, a class-one solo, which is the hardest classification there is, in front of a judge from memory, and get a Division One to qualify for this state competition. And so, this past weekend, these three guys, as well as two others, went and did the same process in Flugerville, competing, really just competing against themselves. But they, they go into a room with one judge and perform their solo, and usually they get some constructive feedback. At the state level, there are some great educators in those rooms, college professors, and you know, professional musicians that they get to perform in front of. And so, all five of our participants medaled, which is a very big deal. They say a three at state is equal to a one at the region level. And we had three people get first division, which is a gold medal, at the state competition. Ryan Holcomb, Nathan Gallegos, as well as Brad Valentine, one of our other percussionists. And then we had two who were second division and earned a silver medal. This is Thomas Domante, and we had Logan Martz as well. And they, they worked really hard, first of all, playing the hardest level of literature, as well as playing it from memory in front of somebody who you don't know is a scary thing, as I'm sure you can guess. But we're super proud of these guys, and we're very thankful for, for all the support that comes from the school board and the Florisville community. I also, real quick, quickly, would like to brag on Mr. Nathan Gallegos, who is a graduate senior from Florisville High this year, and this is actually only his second year in band. And he joined us last year and never looked back. And in fact, Nathan is going on next year to pursue music in college at UTSA. So, great, great experience for him and, and all these guys, so thank you very much.
What instruments did you play?
I played four mallets on the marimba.
Okay. I performed on the snare drum.
I performed on the snare drum.
All right. Percussion.
Yep. Brad Valentine is another percussionist that made it, and then Logan Martz is a French-born player who went and played a solo.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you so much for your recognition.
Gentlemen, congratulations on all your work, hard work. It truly pays off to see what y'all accomplished at this point. There's no way I could even do it. I struggle with the radio. For y'all to be able to do that and do the commitment to it, congratulations. Nathan, best of luck to you.
Thank you very much.
At UTSA, and hopefully, maybe you'll be back here one day, but congratulations, gentlemen.
All right, if you'd like to, Venus Mistre Canby, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Mr. Brew, thank you again. Appreciate it.
Ms. Petrie, do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll now continue with our reports now. Dr. Gilstrap, now give the superintendent.
Yes, board members, Dr. Odom. Graduation went off a couple of Fridays ago. I thank all the board members for being in attendance as we celebrated the class of twenty-four. There were approximately three hundred graduates that walked across the stage that night, and they got to celebrate with their families, with our community, and everything went off without a hitch. The weather was cooperative, a little breezy, but if it hadn't been breezy, it would have been really hot. So, we appreciate that, but thank y'all for being there as we celebrated the class of twenty-four. This evening, we're going to recognize, and we already recognized, our band students along with baseball and softball academic all-state. In total this year, we've recognized a hundred and seventy-eight staff and students throughout the year for their outstanding achievement in and out of classrooms. That's pretty good, it's pretty awesome that we recognize them. That includes a hundred and twenty-seven students. Now, don't forget, the only students we recognized from the state band was just the seniors. So, if you throw in the other a hundred and twenty kids that are in the band, obviously that number jumps. So, they've done a lot of hard work and sacrifice to represent us in everything that they're doing and competing in, and so we want to thank them and recognize that and say congratulations on such a great season for all of our, our groups. Earlier today, the Social Services and Counseling Department hosted a Resource Fair at South Elementary. The event was open to all families to provide access to various community organizations to assist families during their times of need. We were able to connect those in need with the services that they, we offer within our community. So, I want to thank Ms. Heidi Camber and Patrick Arcez for their organizing of the event. It was, it was kind of tough on the attendance this, this time of year, a lot of people are already out of pocket, but our resources came in and they were very appreciative of the opportunity to come in and meet with a few families. Summer maintenance and cleanings has already started with students off-campus. Our buildings are cleared out, and so they are able to complete some of the tasks they need to get done. They're able to do not only the routine cleaning, but also wax all the floors, paint in some needed areas, and complete some preventative maintenance projects, which we know what, whenever you neglect those things, you know what that can lead to. And so, we want to make sure we take an opportunity to do that. The internal pieces for the stadium speakers are in place and they're ready to install, and we're going to talk about that whenever we do our consent agenda, but we want to make sure that we get that speaker system at the stadium up and running, make sure it's operating to the best of its ability. Also, we're going to have our sprinkler systems and gas line pressure tested and all the routine things that have got to get tested every summer, so all that's going to get done. We're going to host the second forum. Mr. Troller will be hosting that tomorrow night in regards to our random student drug testing program. That'll be tomorrow night in the middle school cafeteria at 5:30. So, if anyone's interested in attending that, they're more than welcome to attend. The presentation will be presented on the program, but it'll also be an opportunity to provide any feedback and answer any questions that people might have about the program and the process. All of our board members that are attending SLI next week receive the blue folder this evening, so it should have all of your registration information in there. Do have it suburban reserved, and so we'll be leaving here at central office on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at 6:00 AM. We'll also stop out there at the Oak Hills Church at around 6:15, so if you want to park out there as we go to San Antonio, we'll be glad to pick you up for that. We will have a reception, be attending a reception on Thursday evening, so please make sure we're dressed accordingly for that event. We're going to have a budget workshop on Monday, June the 10th, so next Monday at 6:00 o'clock. The agenda include a brief update on truancy and student transfers, and then we'll get into some of our reports on the current budget and where we are with our proposed budget. In order to jumpstart some of those conversations and discussion, we provided to you in your folder the current proposal for compensation plan, which was also discussed at our workshop with Tasby, and so that is provided for you just for your review, and we'll discuss it in depth and detail a week from today. Also, we're going to have a special meeting on Wednesday, June the 26th at 6:30. That'll take the place of our regular July board meeting. That'll be an opportunity to do any budget amendments before we wrap up the end of the fiscal year on the 30th of June, and then we'll also be approving or considering approval of our compensation plan and our fiscal year '25 budget. So, that'll need to get done before the end of the month so that we can operate on July 1st. So, we're going to have that meeting on the 26th. Also, put it on your calendars, Thursday, July the 25th at 6:00 o'clock, so this is the end of July now. Mr. Shawrock has graciously offered his home for our board administrative retreat, so we'll have some dinner, some time of fellowship with our board members and our campus district administrators and some of our leadership team. It's a great opportunity for us to get to know the administration and administration an opportunity to get to interact with the board. It is an invitation for plus-one, so if you want to bring your spouse, you're welcome to do so for that event. There will not be a regular meeting in July since we are having one at the end of the month, so the next regular meeting will be Monday, August the 5th. So, make sure you mark that down in your calendar. Next regular meeting will be Monday, August the 5th. All the administrators out there too, if you write that down. Finally, per policy DC local, from April 1st to August 31st, the board designate the superintendent to offer contract employment, and so that, that update has been provided to you for any contracts that we've been able to offer. Again, those are not an action item, but for information only, along with any resignations that have been received. You'll see also our final enrollment numbers. We entered the year, we did take a little dip in our enrollment, which is kind of anticipated in that last few days of school. Some of our kids would start to withdraw a little early. Our final enrollment number was 4,026, and our overall year-to-date attendance was 92.57. So, we, we also took a little dip there in our attendance. We are implementing some other ideas for improving attendance for next year, so hopefully that's going to continue to go up. One other thing that I did not jot down in there, and Ms. Petrie has included in your folder, an update on current board hours, and so that is for your review. We're not releasing that, we're not, you know, no action required, but just so you know going into SLI, where you stand on the number of training and professional development hours that you currently have. There's a couple other items listed there as reminders and upcoming events. If you've got any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Dr. Gilstrap. Next on the agenda is item number five, action items. First action item is the consent agenda.
Yes, board members, let me get to that page. We do have our typical consent agenda. Two other items that were added this month. One is the renewal of our food service contract. This is a typical annual renewal for up to five years. There is a guaranteed revenue from our food service department with Sodexo for $158,180. That's the guarantee. The targeted projection is $517,111 is what we project, but we, obviously, we want a plan for what that minimum is. The other thing that is on, listed on here is a donation to exceed $1,000. Our Athletic Booster Club is donating $5,500. This is half the cost of the speaker system that I talked about a while ago in the stadium. So, in order to get that done, the Booster Club did step up, so we want to say thank you to them for providing that donation so that we can get those speakers done at a timely manner. If there's not any questions, the administration recommends the board approve consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay. Stephen Shawrock, do you have a second? Ms. Reed, all right. Any further questions? All in favor of accepting the administration's recommendation for the consent agenda, you can now by raising your hand. Motion carries six to zero. Okay. All right, our next item is to consider approval of the Discipline Alternative Education Program at our local agreement with participating ISDs for the '24-'25 school year by Ms. Rios.
Good evening, Dr. Odom, Dr. Gilstrap, and board. This evening, I bring to you the DAEP agreements from Fall City and Pothe. Both boards have approved those agreements, signed them, and returned them to us, so now we just have to approve them, being the fiscal agent for the, for the, for the program. I've reached out to Kennedy and Karn City, those are the other two participants. Kennedy told me theirs was approved last week, they just haven't gotten it to me yet. Karn City I have not heard from, so I'm hoping there's a still in the works, and they will, I will be bringing those to y'all either on the 26th if we, if we're able, or in August. So, if there, anybody who has any questions on those agreements, those same agreements we had last year. If there are no questions, administration recommends the board approve the Disciplinary Alternative Education Program interlocal agreements with Fall City and Pothe. You can scratch Karn City and Kennedy, we don't have those yet, for the '24-'25 school year as presented.
Mr. President, you can accept the administration's recommendation.
Okay. Mr. Brew, do you have a motion? Do you have a second?
A second.
Okay. Ms. Reed, any further questions? All right. All in favor of accepting the administration's recommendation, you can now by raising your hand. Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we will consider approval of optional flexible school day program. Mr. Rios.
So, good evening, Dr. Gilstrap, Dr. Odom, Board of Trustees. So, I'm here to recap the first year of the FAST program and share our successes. So, the FAST program was established in July 2023. As we complete our first year, we want to recognize the accomplishments and the impact it has made on the lives of our participating students. First, I'd like to introduce Mr. Ward Zeca. Mr. Ward Zeca is the teacher and also the coordinator of FAST, so he's very vital to that program. He's done a great job with our students. He, really, he provides a, just a comprehensive support with all the students, social, emotional, to education, to getting their schedules together, communicating with parents. He is actually the point of contact with all the students, and he calls them and deals with them just about every day. So, he's a very busy man, on top of teaching the electives at the DAEP. So, he's done a great job with it so far. So, I just wanted to introduce him and thank him for everything that he's done this year, the first year to make it very successful. The FAST program overview and goals, so students in the FAST program take part in the optional flexible school day program. This lets them have flexible hours and days to help those at risk of dropping out, who are behind in core subjects, or who have trouble attending regularly. The main goal of FAST is to offer academic success opportunities tailored to each student's unique situation and needs, and I feel that this year, that's really what we've done. unique situation and needs, and I feel that this year that's really what we've done. So some of the successes, our EOC successes. So we had four students who still needed to take their EOCs whenever they enrolled into the program, and all four of them successfully completed and were able to pass the EOCs. So they've done a great job coming in and taking care of that, so that way they can meet their graduation requirements for Florida high school. Our other success that we saw this year was all of them, or most of them, actually met their CCMR requirements. So they've met their requirements. It's really through, it's through a Texas College Bridge program. So it's through, they got their English and their math requirement done for CCMR. So the other ones that didn't get it done, they either, they either fulfilled the requirement before they came to us, or there was an IGC, the individual graduation committee, that was able to waive the requirements, or they completed something to establish that. So they were able to complete and, you know, go on and move on to graduation. So FAST program achievements and graduation outcomes. So in February, there were five students that completed the FAST program, and six more finished in May. So those are a lot higher numbers than we anticipated. Actually, I think when we first started this, we were thinking maybe about five students would complete the program. So we're at 11 already. So there are also two more expected to graduate pending this summer. So if they're able to complete their summer requirements, and I just talked to Mr. Warzekka here about five minutes ago, and it looks like we're going to have one complete tomorrow.
Hopefully tomorrow.
Hopefully tomorrow. So then we'll only have one left that we'll need to complete for the school year.
Let's shake their hand, give them a palm.
So we also have, just returning students, we have three that were looking to return because they entered the program, they were still a little behind, and they have one more year to finish out, so we're anticipating that those should be successful in the program as well. So far, it's important to point out that all the students that have enrolled in the program haven't dropped out, and they've all made 100% attendance, so it's been great.
What's their feedback on the program?
Student feedback.
Student feedback. So they all love it, parents as well. They love having the flexibility of coming in when they need to and when they want to, based on whatever. Some of them have jobs, some of them childcare. We've seen different situations that have come up through this program, and they love it. I mean, I think we're going to really increase our numbers as we go through the following years, because it's starting to take off. Kids are starting to find out about it, and it's just a better option for some of those students that need that, you know, that kind of education, something away from the traditional setting. So so far, it's been great. Here's a diagram just to summarize what we've done. I talked a little bit about the enrollment. We had 13 students, graduates, 11 CCMR. There were 10 students that completed their CCMR and passed the EOCs. We had a total of six. There's been 100% attendance rate. We haven't had any drops. So their minimum requirement is to do four hours a week, and so far, we have pitting but not show up. Done great. So to start next school year, pitting school, pitting summer school, we have those two. Now it's down to one. So we have three for sure returning, and we'll see about that one, so we're looking at four potentially. That's a potential number for next school year. Just talking about that, three students returning from the previous year, potentially four. And we're currently accepting applications at this time. We're getting with the high school. I've talked to Mr. Barrett. We're going to come up with some guidelines and some parameters that will be able to identify more kids that we can get more, and we can service more in that program. Any questions?
I know one of the things, wherever we put this, and we talked about it last summer as we got this program rolling, and really, the number I had in my head was five. Man, if we can get five kids.
Yes, sir.
You know, that's five kids that we're going to drop out, and now we're sitting here at 13 kids enrolled, 11 are already completed. And the biggest, the biggest thing is, the most important thing is, the kids that go in there, 100% of them need to walk out of there with a diploma. And of course, we had a couple of things at the beginning. We were learning, working some things out, so now we've got the CCMR thing worked out in that program, and so they're coming out already with that checkbox for that, because we know how important that is on accountability. But most importantly, we're getting 100% attendance out of those kids, and they're graduating, and they're not just rushing through something. It's something that's valuable. It is an education. They are having to get the CCMR. They're having to pass the EOCs. It's just there are some life circumstances that take place with some kids that this right here is a better option for them to get done, so.
Right. So I'd like to thank you all for allowing us to create this program and to follow. Thank you, Dr. Gilstrout, for even recommending it. It's, we've seen a lot of successes so far with it. We're hoping that it gets bigger, and really, thank you all so much for supporting our campus, you know, because it really did help.
Well, I'd like to say thank you, Mr. Warzekka. I know, not only heard how much you do, but I've seen you in action out there, so.
Thank you, yes. It's been, it was great watching those 11 kids walk that stage.
So they didn't think they were going to.
There was a few that we were worried about. I know parents were.
Their parents didn't think they were going to.
I saw a parent at this afternoon, and she just thanked me again for helping her son finish that diploma.
It's been great. And it's funny, because we had a lot of students initially, we said we weren't going to take any DAEP students, but we've had a few that were DAEP students that actually enrolled, and they were very successful with us. So it's kudos, actually, to Mr. Warzekka and the relationships he built with the students.
So is there anything more that y'all need from us? Let me ask you that. You know, is there anything else we can do there? You know, I know it's new, we just did it for the first year, but is there anything we've seen?
Just supporting our program. We're fine. There's nothing that we need as far as materials. We have the curriculum. We have great men running the program. As of right now, we're good.
I know that I, back in 10 and 11 and 12, I did the Help with the Choices program.
Yes, ma'am.
And that was, you know, we had kids, I had a 21-year-old and a 25-year-old sister graduating, and we ended up with 92. These kids had dropped out and gone back, and to see a success that they don't have to wait that long, you know, and they, having support for them, and the great support you give Anthony and stuff, and the success that the kids give. They called me the cheerleader, because I did all the electives. Come on, come on. And I still remember this one young man, and I want to cry again, but he came up to me, and he says, I said, "Go, go get the other one." And he says, "Ms. Reed, I'm the first one in my family to get a diploma." I was, well, I designed that. I mean, it was a cry fest. But to see that, those kids have that accomplishment, and this program is awesome, and they don't have to wait. They don't have to get a GDD. They have diploma.
And just good for that flexibility, because, you know, some of the kids that we have, they have circumstances where, you know, they have a child or medical condition, and this helps kids just, I feel, be more, I guess, successful, and they're more positive about themselves, because they know they can finish the program, finish graduation in a, not a traditional environment, it's a, just a special environment where they can get that diploma and go on to the real world and be successful.
What are some that you look for when you're looking for the candidates? Because I remember, once they take this path, they can't go back.
Correct. So it was a unicorn initially. It was a student that had, like, no discipline record, had attendance issues, and passed all their EOCs, and had at least 12 credits. But that's hard to find, so we had to change the guidelines just a little bit. There are some kids that we did accept that had a few discipline issues that we knew, and we were able to take that chance with them. Really, if their discipline is more about attendance, those are the ones we're targeting. If they're failing classes, but they're still showing some kind of effort, those are the ones we're getting. If we have the parent support, those are the other ones, because that part's important. You know, it wouldn't work if we didn't have the parent's support. And all the students that we have right now, that's exactly what helps, because they're communicating with us to make sure that their students are showing up when they're supposed to. So that's really the guideline. Parent support is what we're looking for. Students that are making some kind of effort, and the majority of their discipline record being linked to more attendance than actual, you know, violent offenses, that's what we're looking for.
One of the things that's required is to annually, the board has to approve the program every year, so we send the application into TEA, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Rios for that recommendation.
So, board, I recommend that we start out the '24-'25 school year with approving our optional flexible school day.
I make the motion to accept the administration's recommendation. And can I say, along with that, this is another feel-good story. We have a lot of those throughout the year, but this one stands out to me. And congratulations. That's all I got to say. This is wonderful. I think it deserves applause, and I'm excited to make that motion to accept that.
I second.
Okay. Mr. Booth seconded it. All right. Any further questions? All in favor of accepting the administration's recommendation, let me know by raising your hand. All right. Six to zero. Thank you, Mr. Rios.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warzekka.
Thank you so much.
I know one of the things that we've had, we've had people from other districts contact us. I don't want to transfer, that's one thing we're not going to do. We don't take transfers, kids that come in, because these kids are already at risk. And so if we were to take another student from outside the district that's not at risk, that's not going to be a good situation. So we're starting to spread, so thank you all very much for your efforts.
Thank you, hon.
Our last action item is to consider approval of TEA low attendance waivers. Mr. Shodrock.
Good evening, Superintendent of Schools, Board President, Board of Trustees. Back in January 16, 2024, there were some concerns in regards to cold weather.